Councilwoman Mackey, please sign.
I do.
Good evening. At this time, we are going to call this session to order. I'm going to ask the clerk to give us the compliance.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification.
Okay, state this to my agreement going into executive session, please.
Yes ma'am. Under item number one, discussion of employment appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, a student, or personal regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body for the county administrator, county attorney, or part of council, and for emergency services. Under number two, discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contract arrangements and proposed purchase or sale of property, the receipt of legal advice for the legal advice relating to the opinion, threat, and potential claim, or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the public agency and other adversary conditions involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. For election matters, exit three, regional affordable housing trust vote, airport leases, 11 acres off of East Industrial Park Road, tax map number 0633003010. And for item number five, discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. For prospect update, Chelsea South, Bayard Park, PDD, Stevenson Purchase, Proposal Development Agreement Extension for Peninsula Track Cottages.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session at this time.
So, second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Afternoon. I'm going to call for a motion to come out of executive session.
So move it, Madam Chair.
Second.
The properly moved and second, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
At this time, would we have any motion coming out of executive session?
We do, as one Madam Chair. Move to authorize our attorneys at the law firm, Parker Hope, to send a letter to the city of Harveyville detailing the county's position on exit three as discussed in executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Moving right along. At this time, we're going to call for our pledge of allegiance by Councilman Bradley and invocation by Councilman Ackles.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more holy and righteous God. We coming for you one more time, humble as we know how. And Father God, we just want to tell you thank you for how you brought to us last night and has ruled this morning in our right mind. Able to move on our act, we know one more time.
Yes.
And Father God, we ask you that we go through this meeting, Father God. We ask you to have us to be able to govern ourselves as we go forward. And Father God, all of those who read family, Father God, we ask you, Father God, to touch their lower, Father God, give them a heart and mind, Father God, as we go forward. Father God, we ask only many blessings in your Son, Jesus name, but say amen.
Amen.
What's on the agenda?
So move it, Madam Chair.
Second.
The properly moved and second. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes of 5:16, 2022.
So move it, Madam Chair.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Presentations. Councilwoman Clark, presentation of a plaque, Mr. Dale Terry from council, for years of service to Jasper County. Is Mr. Terry here?
Seat is in the back left hand.
Always in that corner.
I'm hot.
Councilman, join me at this time. Dale, we just thank you for all your years of service. But I can surely tell you, you really worked while you were here at all capacity. You did, Dale Terry. And we want you to enjoy this time you have all. Because I'm counting, I got it marked on the calendar, when your 30 days are over. So that you get returned.
All right.
We are so happy to present this to you. And I'm going to pass it over to the vice chair and let him present that plaque to you. What it says?
It says, presented to Dale Terry, an appreciation of your many years of dedicated service and commitment to Jasper County from 2019 to 1991, 6/30/22. Jasper County Council, this day, July 18, 2022.
It don't seem like it's been that long, man. I want to tell you, it's been a good working, it's been counting months, I've got a lot with a lot of, of all of them, I can say.
Just tell the truth.
No, the disagreements. But like I said, I don't like to keep disagreeing, I don't like to let disagreements hang around. I like to throw them out. Few minutes is over with.
Very.
And you want to do the next thing. I've had some good people that work good, got a good crew. That's what makes you look good.
Glad to have you.
Nice to have y'all.
Yes, thank you.
Hey, I got, having a good thought, man, that makes my job a lot easier.
Yes, that's true. Okay, moving right along. Proclamation. David Teller, proclamation for the 2022 Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week to Queen Que.
Madam Chair, woman, there was a council, and you can sit back over here. Read this, and assess cure with her assistance at a park. This is a proclamation to designate the week of July 3, 2022, through August 6, 2022, as Gullah Geechee Nation Week. Whereas Jasper County is one of the most historic low country counties in South Carolina, and in the 18th century, this area and South Carolina coast became the location of some of the richest rice and farming plantations in the South, which were linked to specific West African ethnic groups who became known as the Gullah Geechee. And whereas the Gullah Geechee ancestral civilization originated in West Africa, is people coming to the United States due to having been kidnapped to be enslaved in the United States to work on these plantations and coastal regions, including South Carolina. With their African fair, original language, and craftsmanship, the Gullah Geechee people left their mark on South Carolina. Whereas the Gullah Geechee culture has had a powerful impact on the low country of South Carolina, including Jasper County, and these Gullah Geechee influences have helped define our southern lifestyle and culture. Whereas John Baskin, the sheriff of Jasper County, and the South Carolina House of Representatives from 1870 to 1874, was born in 1827, emerged from his culture and his community, and farmed the very lands on which he and many of his people had been enslaved. Whereas the preservation and celebration of the Gullah Geechee culture has gained momentum due to the Gullah Geechee Cultural Heritage Act, created by United States Representative James Clyburn, as well as the Africans of others, such as Queen Kat of the Gullah Geechee Nation, and Kwame Shaw, co-founders of the Gullah Geechee Nation International Music and Movement Festival. Whereas the Gullah Geechee Sustainability Plan has been created to sustain the land and the Gullah Geechee culture. Whereas Queen Kat, who began the first Gullah Geechee to speak before the United Nations of a half of the Gullah Geechees, led to the creation of this plan and the aforementioned act. And whereas it appropriate to recognize the importance of bringing awareness and appreciation to this rich culture and history in order to increase understanding of all the contributions the Gullah Geechee have given to our area. And whereas the Gullah Geechee Nation International Music and Movement Festival moves to various parts of the Gullah Geechee Nation, and the African diaspora each year to educate the world about to celebrate the continuation of the tradition, Gullah Geechee traditions. And whereas the Gullah Geechee Nation International Music and Festival will be the culmination of the Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. And whereas a series of activities will take place throughout Jasper County, and virtue to honor the history and legacy of the Gullah Geechee Nation and are part of the United Nations' decade of people of African descent. Whereas Jasper County joins in celebrating the lives of the Gullah Geechees that have left such a rich legacy of our county, region, and nation, are joining in with the theme for this year's celebration as Queen Kat.
This shall we be.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Jasper County Council is hereby proudly recognized the 2022 Gullah Geechee Nation International Music and Movement Festival, proclaiming the week of July 30, 2022, through August 6, 2022, as Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week in Jasper County, and encourages all citizens to actively participate in educational activities aimed at increasing both knowledge and appreciation of this rich culture. Now this 18th day of July, 2022, in original Jasper County, South Carolina, yes, assigned to Morgan Park as the chair.
Get that beautiful chair woman back there and picture too. You want me to come down, Queen? You come down, come on down here. Oh no, no, never come down here and take this your picture.
I'm coming too, Queen.
Dale Teller done been in plenty of your picture over there, yes. Come on down.
I can't get it down to the chair woman now.
I know that's a good. Anyone, come on out, all right.
I love getting my picture taken.
We need one more on this side down, somebody. Ah.
Well, you better have a lot of it here, son.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. Thank you, thank you to y'all. So glad it could be on again. I know the meeting may start till I see my face come out that back door. Focus y'all to some of the programs this year, we ain't that far away from you. We gonna launch on St. Helena Island on July 30, at noon, in the St. Helena ballpark. I know y'all know about baseball, because your museum here had the baseball exhibit in there and things like that, so y'all can come on out this week. And then we'll be even closer for the festival this year, because we are doing Bluffton, at the Bluffton Oster Factory. So y'all can get a David Bull and come around the creek show. So y'all can come celebrate, because we on August 6 at noon tour. So we gonna have a good time. So thank you, thank you, one more again to Jasper County. And y'all know, say this season in Hampton County vexed with you, because I come here instead of going there this year. So they vexed with y'all this season. But I, but I send love to them too, and thank you to y'all.
Moving right along, this woman.
Yes ma'am, on the next item on the agenda is Art Govalen from the SCORES Low Country Presentations.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I believe that we had sent you a presentation material. I don't know whether you have one or not, but anyhow, I will, I'll just follow that in a broad sense. My name is Art Govalen, and I'm from Bluffton, Tennessee. And I'm also a volunteer member of SCORE organization. The reason why I'm here today is twofold. One, I want to let you know what SCORE stands for. SCORE is an organization that is designed to help, they're all volunteers, designed to help small business men and women, and as they approach their business, to get into the business, as well as to grow the business. In addition to that, I want to also go over with you a little bit about the initiative that we started last year, which has to do with the Small Business Minority Small Business Award Program. We strongly felt, over the years, that one of the things that is difficult to reach is capital. And with that in mind, we have started an initiative to award capital. It could be seed capital, it could be a capital that the small business owner can use to, say, for example, develop website for his business or her business, and that kind of activity. So I want to talk to you about that, and I want to particularly talk to you about the Jasper County. The SCORE organization is a national organization, and our chapter here is one of the chapters of that national organization. We serve the four counties of Colleton, Jasper, Beaufort, and Hampton. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm here, to let you know that we, SCORE is a volunteer business organization, we have 40 mentors, and we take on about 400 to 500 calls from our clients who seek mentoring help for their business. So it's an opportunity for the community, you know, to know that there is an organization free of cost. There is not a cent to be paid by anybody for this help. And the 40 mentors that we have, they are all ex-business people, corporate people. I myself come from John Electric Company. And so we have gone through the mill, and therefore, we feel that we can offer good mentoring help for those trying to get into the business. So with that, I just want to go over with you a few of the slides here, in the interest of time, and, but I'll also leave my card, in case you need to get in touch with me. Anyone, anyone can get in touch with me, or with SCORE for that matter. As I said, the SCORE operates in four counties, Beaufort, Colleton, Jasper, Hampton County, and we support businesses in all stages, from the startup, growth, even exiting the business. Now, what do we, our core mission, really, SCORE's core mission is to provide mentoring help. It's a one-on-one mentoring, and by, what do I mean by that? A client signs up on our website for a mentor help, describes the business, and we, we get on it, and, and a mentor calls him, sets some meeting, and go through the business, and see how together we can help that business in whatever difficulty or whatever vision that that business has. And that's what we do. It's one-on-one, free, it's a confidential service, and we stay with the client for as long as they need us for that, for that work. In addition to that, we also offer a number of resources. We offer workshops. Practically, there is a workshop on any business topic almost once every week, and not only locally, but also across the nation, because most of them are all on Zoom. And in particular, we offer special workshops here, Veterans Workshop, which is coming up in November, and we also offer workshops on nonprofits, and, which is, I think slated pretty soon. And, and also, we offer specialized workshops, such as Quick Book Handling, and things of that nature as well. Now, when we look at by the numbers, you can see that we are, last year, for example, we served, we helped establish 48 new businesses, which created 118 jobs and so forth. But the most important statistics out of that is that 86% of the clients that have dealt with us, would, they say that they would recommend SCORE to family and friends. 74% confirm that SCORE helped with their business. And I can go through, we are one of the best chapters in the nation, and we are one platinum chapter for the last four years. What does that all mean? That means that we take very seriously the mentoring help that we provide to clients. And now, I want to transition to the key program that I want to talk to you today about, which is the Minority Business Small Business Support Program. And prior to this, SCORE, our chapter, has partnered with, with an MOU on the Commission of Minority Affairs of South Carolina, so we work with them. We also work with the Native Island Business and Community Affairs called NIFCA in Hilton Head Island. And we also partner with Black Chamber of Commerce, who are SBA agent in Beaufort. And what, we have been doing this since 2012. What we do there is that we conduct workshops, because the Black Chamber of Commerce requires all their applicants to take the workshop on business, particularly in terms of forming business planning, as well as financial statements that they need before they give out the money. And we conduct, we have, we have been conducting four of these three series workshops a year since 2012. So that's what we, we have done. But this year, or last year, I should say, 2021, we started a new initiative, and the purpose of that initiative, as I said, is to get our sponsors, particularly bags, and provide us with funds, so that we can disperse that funds to deserving minority small business owners. And so we started that program last year, and the way we structured it is that we would require the businesses to provide some business information about themselves, about their business, about their, about their financial situation, and, and we help them do that. And once the application is in, SCORE is not involved in the determination of the awards. The chosen applicants, the people that have provided the application as required, their information is provided to what we call Advisory Council. Who are these people? These are people drawn from the communities. So I'm here, as a matter of fact, in Jasper County. We, we had one representative from private organization, but we want other people, such as community leaders, to be participant. We have community leaders in Hampton County, as well as Colleton. So we would like you to consider becoming an advisory committee member. The advisory committee does not make you a part of SCORE. All it does, it looks at the applications that are provided, and determine who should get the awards. Last year, we had 80 applicants, and we, they sold, out of which 24 applications were correctly provided, in other words, the information that were provided. And out of those, 11 were given $2,500 each, 11 businesses. As you go through this presentation material, you can see in the back, the people that have received the awards and how they have used it. And so it is a, it is a serious thing for these people, in terms, even though it sounds like $2,500 is not a big amount, but it is a big amount. And, and so that's what we are here for. Now, we are going to be going into the second year this year, and we now have $41,000 that we want to disperse. And therefore, this year, what we are doing, as I indicated to you last year, we had 80 applications, out of which only 24 qualified. We want to improve that score. How do we do that? We are going to conduct workshops before the application process starts. This year's program starts on September the 7th, and the application deadline is October the 12th. Between those two days, we will receive the application process and so forth. However, before that happens, we are scheduling workshops, in-person workshops, and to have the applicants, potential applicants, they can attend the workshop, and, but if they cannot attend the physical workshops, we also have Zoom lectures, a Zoom tutorial on that as well. You can sign up for that. And even if you cannot do that, we will be happy to send them the Zoom recording to the people, so that they can look at it and fill out the application. What is the application requirements are? The applicant needs to, to fill out an application form, which is essentially a lot of generic things. On top of that, we expect the applicant to provide us with a simplified version, very, very simplified version of a business plan. very simplified version of a business plan. And included in that, a simplified version of their financials. However, these workshops are, are designed to teach how to fill those things out. And we also offer help in case that they are not able to follow it, so that they can, they can always comment on us providing that help prior to the application being submitted. Once the application, application is submitted, it is final. And after that, a process of selection is gone through. Last year, I want to tell you, out of the eighty applications, five from Jasper County. And out of the five from Jasper County, no, no award was given. And we want to change that. That's the reason why I'm here. I also saw the party, Will Town Council, and had discussions with them as well. So we, two things I'm requesting to you with you is that, please propagate this news to all the people that are in your community. It's an opportunity for minority-owned small businesses to avail themselves of a twenty-five hundred dollar award to support their business. Number two, I would like one of you, or two of you, or many of you become part of the Advisory Council to look at all the applicants that are, that are submitted and see how to, to, to make the awards. So that's entirely up to the Advisory Council, it's got nothing to do with SCORE. It's a transparent thing that we wanted to make sure that it is not done by SCORE. So those two things I want to impress upon you. If, if nothing else, that's what I want to impress upon you, see whether we can get some help. We, we want to do this, we have been, we have started doing this, we expect that we will do it, continue to do it every year. We are hoping to increase the number, the dollar amount every year. We had thirty-six thousand dollars this year, forty-one thousand, there is potentially more available. So I want to make sure that we, we have good representation from Jasper County. And, and people in Jasper County, particularly minority-owned small businesses, have the opportunity to apply for it and successfully, successfully get the funds that they need. And with that, I, I can entertain any questions that you might have. And, and if you have, any other comments, I'll be also with you.
Okay. How do you acquire your resources for your awards?
Through grants from banks, Truist Bank and Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo is a big contributor, Truist Bank is also a big contributor. For example, we conduct a Veterans Workshop. It's a four, I'm, I'm sorry, five-week workshop, five successive weeks. And that is sponsored by Bank of America. And so there are people wanting to do that. And all our job, what we try to do is to bring them together with the people that need it.
Thank you. Any more questions? We thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For coming and providing us with this information. And we're going to encourage people in Jasper County that I know have businesses to take a part.
Yeah, thank you, because we really need the help. We, we need to reach out to the community and I'm hoping that we can do that together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you be giving us cards?
Say that.
Will you be giving us cards?
Yes.
You just leave it down there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is David Anderson for airport inspection report.
Chairman, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here today.
Yes.
Is there any, did everyone have a chance to read the report? I can go over briefly if you'd like for me to. I don't know the format you have here for this.
You can go through it, just touch on it.
Just touch on it, okay. It was conducted on May twenty-sixth, in person by me, several interviews, several parts and facilities of the airport were examined. Early in the process, it became apparent that Jasper County is not receiving the appropriate fees for the use of the airport facilities. There are several tenants on the airfield who are not paying anything for the use of, in essence, public property. Several leases have expired. And I don't know what the history is as far as what they pay, but once they've expired, they've stopped paying and those leases have not been renewed. I applied those provisions within our agreement and the Federal Aviation Regulation for Airport Operations Safety and Security. I read at length the current Jasper County ordinances that you had promulgated and they are complete, they are instructive, they are not discriminatory, and they set a pretty good ground floor level for operations at the airport. Frankly, I've seen a lot of leases and I've seen a lot of ordinances and what have you for airports and those three documents are right on the mark. But there are several people, several entities at the airport who are not following. And in my opinion, they need to be enforced. The first item that I had on the report, on the report regarded, regards the Aeronautics The word aeronautics is probably misused there, it should be Airport Commission. And I recommend strongly the initiation of a process to designate the appropriate number of people, whatever that number may be. Some places I've seen have five, some have seven. I have one airport that I go to that has nine people on the airport's commission. But that commission needs to be established. It works for you as the county council. They are advisory only, they don't really control anything, but they can come before you and advise you about operations at the airport in an orderly fashion. There were some taxiway lights that were out of service and that we're working on that. There are two separate aircraft maintenance facilities operating at the airport right now. I reaffirm today that they are indeed operating and extensively. Maintenance facilities do not, they don't have a contract with the county to do that type of business. They don't have a business license, as far as I could determine. In addition, the performance of aircraft maintenance on an aircraft by an individual who was not the registered owner, that, if I owned an airplane or you owned an airplane, you could do some maintenance on it, limited, but you could do some maintenance on that airplane, just like a canyon car. In some cases, spark plugs can be changed, batteries can be changed, tires can be changed. But if you have any other maintenance above and beyond just the normal wear and tear type thing, you have to have a certificated mechanic, FAA certificated mechanic do that. And that certificated mechanic has to have oversight. When that aircraft maintenance is performed on an aircraft that is not the aircraft of that mechanic, they've got to be in accordance with, that maintenance has to be conducted in accordance with the Federal Aviation Regulation. Those private refueling operations on the airfield. I was surprised about that because that is something of the past, whereas individuals privately refuel. If you owned an airplane, you can privately refuel your own airplane. That's not a problem. But if you...
Problem.
That's right, it's not a problem. But if you refuel somebody else's airplane, it becomes a problem. And if you, as a council, allow that to happen, you accept that liability. And fuel is a liability. Two to three times a month in South Carolina, there's a fuel issue. Of bad fuel being introduced into an aircraft. Two to three times a month. This fueling is being done from a fixed tank with no flowage fees being paid by the individual who is doing it, again, who is a private individual. And there's a fuel truck involved. And the fuel truck is parked out there at the airfield. It's not properly grounded. It is a hazard. And it needs to be properly grounded and my recommendation is to remove it. I also recommend the termination of the operation of above-ground refueling and refueling with that truck. The main maintenance, the main entrance gate at the airport is locked open. You could go on, on that airfield anytime, day or night, right through that gate because it's locked open. We need to have someone go out there and fix that gate so the thing will shut. And the code for the entrance into the airport facility, which is fenced beautifully, by the way, beautiful fencing, but it's got an open gate that stays open twenty-four-seven. Anybody can go in and out. I'm surprised that you haven't had more incidents of people going onto the airfield and disturbing the operations on the airfield. Now, we have another situation regarding that and that is an individual hangar operator has a private gate in the fence itself that was installed by, when you had that fence put up. That private gate allows that person to go from his hangar directly to his own property through an unauthorized gate. I checked it today and it's open. Now, it's a through-the-fence operation, but it's not a through-the-fence operation in the strictest sense because that individual is not performing maintenance or having some sort of commercial operation that he has to allow people through the fence. Hilton Head has a through-the-fence operation for a maintenance facility that's been established there for years. But about once every year or so, a car ends up on the runway at Hilton Head, driven by people who've become confused and drive out on, on a yellow line, they think they're okay, they drive out on the runway, which at Hilton Head is a little bit dangerous. If you're going to allow the individual to have the through-the-fence gate back there, you need to enter into an easement agreement with that person that spells out who's got what responsibility for that gate. An easement is a common document, it's not difficult to draw up, and you should strongly consider that. In the meantime, I recommend that gate be closed. There have been aircraft taking off and landing on the old sod area next to the old runway, which are in direct conflict with the new runway. That is a significant safety hazard and I want you to try to keep in mind, if you will, that our rules and regulations and procedures and policies and all the things we do in aviation are based upon the lowest common denominator, which means in aviation, a brand-new student pilot on his first solo cross-country. And he's coming to your airfield, to your airport, as part of his round robin. And he arrives there, landing on runway three-six because that's the prevailing wind that day, and here comes somebody straight at him from that other runway, or old runway. That's why it's a hazard. We forget that the system is built around the lowest common denominator. That's what safety is. I also recommend, based upon the number of noise complaints that you're now beginning to receive, that the airport traffic pattern be moved to the west side of the field, to put all the aircraft who are flying on the west side. And that will reduce, in my opinion, significantly the noise complaints. The area is growing more and more every day and it never surprises me, it just never fails to surprise me, that someone would build a house right next to the airport property and then complain about the noise. That's a fact of life for us in this business. Now, noise is not a safety issue. The FAA has a noise program and if it becomes something significant, and they, the FAA has this magic formula, I don't know it off the top of my head, but if it becomes significant, what they will do then is begin to describe for your airport patterns and procedures for you to follow if you land or take off from there, which are restrictive. And in this day and age, with that airport and that runway that you have, you're going to attract more and more aircraft. It's going to become more and more, it's going to become busy. And you just need to think about, there's a process, relatively simple, move everybody to the west side. That will help a great deal. There are several airport users not, that are utilizing facilities, including tie-downs. There's an open pole shed out there by glider operators where maintenance is being performed. And these people who have their aircraft tied down are not paying any fees at all. Not all of them, but the majority of them. They have aircraft out there, they tie them down, which is a great convenience, but I don't know of many airports where, and I've been flying fifty years or a little bit more, really, I don't know many airports I ever went to that I was going to stay overnight and the airplane had to be tied down, that I didn't pay a fee, much less keep it there permanently, it seems like. There was a person who has a privately-owned vehicle out there parked adjacent to his hangar. That privately-owned vehicle is in the form of a large, what I call self-propelled RV, self-contained RV, huge vehicle. I don't know if that person actually has a lease, but if he had a lease, it would have something in it in the modern lease today that would state that he can't do that. Otherwise, you get vehicles parked all over the place where aircraft are mixed and people are mixed. It becomes an unsafe situation. I asked a question and the question was, when was the last time the inside of the hangars out there were inspected? And nobody in the current vintage can say when that occurred because they haven't been. We don't have a routine or schedule designed to inspect the inside of hangars. That is why people are doing maintenance, performing maintenance on aircraft. That is why people are doing maintenance, performing maintenance on aircraft. Nobody's looking at them. What they have to have in place to do that. I'm not saying that they're not qualified to do it, but they're not authorized to do it. Because they don't own that property. The public owns that property. And you all, we're the public. The item that I want you to try to carry away from this is that if you allow an improper operation, whatever it happens to be, to continue on that airport, if and when something goes wrong and there's an accident, incident, fire, somebody gets hurt, the person who's responsible for it can hide behind the fact that he's been doing, or she's been doing that for years. It's a tacit approval on the part of the sponsor and you folks of the sponsor. You're tacitly approving operations that are not appropriate or unsafe. Without, in the event the minimum contribution level is allowed, it will significantly inhibit Jasper County from managing the airport in a manner that would eventually approach financially self-sustaining. You can get to the financially self-sustaining position. It's a wonderful facility. But you're prevented from going there right now, and that is in non-compliance with the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Compliance Documents that have been issued to you because you received federal money to build that runway. You've obligated yourself to be in compliance with the grant assurances. And some of the things that you might want to consider, and I'll stop talking and answer any of your questions. You want to extend the runway to 5,000 and one foot. Because that's the insurance company cutoff for landing jets on your airfield. There are jets landing there now, but one has already run off the end of the runway. 5,001, you need about an 800-foot extension to the south. AWAS, that's an Automatic Weather Reporting System, needs to be installed. We already are funded for it. I need to talk to my brother Ken on the telephone, which I might just tickle him a little bit with your permission, and tell him to get that doggone thing installed. Your airport engineer, I talked to, I didn't talk to him, I talked to his boss today. He's going to come by and see the airport here the next few days for himself, take a look at it. In addition, an FAA safety inspector is going to, because I'm not, you know, I was a safety inspector for years, but I don't do that anymore. I do this kind of thing. It's easy to do this kind of thing and run. But an FAA safety inspector is going to come down in the next few days and take a look at some things. I'm going to provide this report to him to let him see what we have working. The council needs to support the fact that you have a 21st century airport. It is not an old-boy system anymore. And for that reason, you've got to support it, you've got to go through the process and get the leases right and get the folks educated on what they can and cannot do. You're not asking for anything that's not done on every other airport in South Carolina that's a public airport. Now, if it was private, it'd be different. But this is a public airport. So you need to think, but it's going to take some work, it's going to take some time, but you need to start doing that. That's my biggest recommendation. I'll answer any questions. Yes, sir?
Mr. Anderson, everything you say, whatever you say, it's really our fault because these things have come before us and we need to set these things in place. We already talked about it, that you said that you're going to set it in place. And evidently, we did not set it in place, and I understand what you're saying, because these things can be a hazard. And it also can get out of hand, risking what it is. And we need to support the individual that is in charge and let the individual that have these handles know that we run the county and knock them. And we need to put them in place, and we need to do it right now. You don't need to let this drag on long enough.
Sir, I certainly hear you loud and clear, and you're 100% right. Now, I will say this. I have been involved as an inspector and safety guy in aviation for a number of years. A whole career. Most, if a very small, minute percentage of people that I had to deal with were not upstanding citizens. Most, if not every one of the people I've had to deal with over the years, have been good people. They're good people. What's hanging over your airport right now is what used to be. That's all that is. This is what we've done. What's wrong with that? Well, you can't do that anymore on an airport that has a runway like you have, that's attracting jets. I don't know if a jet ever landed on me, previous runway. Not even close. You're going to install fuel, you're going to build a terminal, you've got extra ramp space being funded. It's going to be a crown jewel for the lower part of South Carolina. You've got to be patient, and you have to stick to your guns. But keep in mind, most of those people are good people, but this has to be met and told, this is how we're going to do it. And some of them will leave.
That's all right, too.
Yeah, it can be. Some of them will. That's just the nature of a person who's been doing something for so long. And you're asking them to change, and they don't want to. They're not going to, so they can go somewhere else. But if they're going to be at your airport, they need to follow the rules. And those rules were not made up overnight. They've been in place now forever. Does anybody answer?
You said that we have excellent ordinances in place, instructive ordinances in place. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
If such is the case, from your perspective, what is necessary to make certain that those ordinances are followed?
Well, let's just say this. I don't want to take up everybody's time here, but there's a speed limit sign out on the interstate. The speed limit sign on the interstate says 70 miles an hour. Now, if you find somebody who's doing just 70 on 995, I want to know about it. Because everybody drives a little faster than that. Because they know everybody else is driving at the same speed. So it's not just a question of, here is a piece of paper, I want you to read and know this. It's not that simple. I wish it was, but it's not. What those individuals who are not, don't have a current lease and/or who will do whatever they want to do regardless of what we say to them, they have to cut, you have to see those people eyeball-to-eyeball across the table. Have those documents present, hand them a copy or give them the link to find it on the web and have them sign a document that says they've been notified. You have to go to that extreme with some...
If they choose not to sign once you have presented them to them, then what is the next step?
You go to see your county attorney and start a process to have them removed from the airport. You don't want to, in my opinion, you don't want to get into the business of playing hardball like that. But there might be one or two or three of them that you might have to do that with, even where there'll be others who want to leave on their own because they don't like the rules. That's natural. Nobody likes rules. I don't like rules, for that matter. But we all have to abide by them.
That's it.
If you want to have a safe and efficient operation, you have to abide by them. And it's going to become more and more busy, more and more attractive. As you add things to that airfield, it's going to draw people like flies.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
We thank you for coming to go to this report. And we keep loud and clear, and quite a few things in here that we have already started to work on. And the biggest problem that we were having is to let the airport manager know that we stood behind him and support him because he brought all of these things to our attention. Maybe not two of them I looked over on this report. But we're working on them. We thank you. You were there, and I know you've been around a long time. I know you for years. And we're going to get it right. We're going to get it right because we don't want any liability falling on the county.
If you're going to have an airport, Madam Chairman, you've got to do it right. There isn't a choice. I wish there was a choice for you, but there really isn't.
There is it. There isn't a choice.
Not really.
And like you say, they just used to doing things their way. But now, it's a brand-new day in Jasper County.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have to follow the procedures of the FAA.
That's right.
So we thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all for your time.
Now, the floor will be open to the public.
Now, we have two people signed in. Just want to remind you, each have three minutes to speak. We'll start with our regular Mr. Grant McCord from the Coastal Conservation. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Council.
How you doing?
Hey, I'm doing well. I just wanted to say I watched the special meeting last week with regards to the consideration of a half penny for green space, a sales tax. And on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League, I commend the Jasper County Council and staff for their consideration of that voter option half penny sales tax for green space. And while a half penny sales tax referendum cannot be added to the ballot this November because of some existing sales tax, there's still an opportunity to pursue conservation funding through other means. I encourage the council to utilize the conservation finance tools identified by the Trust for Public Land in their November 2021 study. These tools include bonding, which is widely supported in South Carolina. And with the TPL study identified that bonding could raise up to $6 billion in about 20 years. You know, the recent turnout at public hearings in Jasper County regarding the Chelsea South PDD that shows that there's an appetite in Jasper County for land conservation. And I think that in considering the pros and cons of a half penny for green space, which would generate over 10 years, $17.5 million, the staff has already started to work out what that ballot referendum might look like in the future. And I think that in many ways, the county is ahead of the curve. The legislation authorizing the county green space sales tax just passed recently. And so Jasper County is one of the first counties to consider this green space sales tax referendum. And so I applaud you all for that. And with Agenda Item I and other developments, you know, coming to the county, I think these sorts of tools will be especially important moving forward. And I just want to say thank you. All right, have a good one.
Thank you. We got Ms. Liz's call, sir?
Been sitting a long time. How you guys doing that? Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say welcome and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to address the tax assessment proposed letters that came out and almost gave me a heart attack because it would have gone from roughly $700 to $200. And I noticed on the Facebook page that we have, there was a lot of interest developed out of that. People were very, they didn't know what was going on. And my only suggestion would be, along with the assessment or the proposed assessment, there may have been an explanation. I think that came just a couple of days later. And it might have been beneficial for that information to go out at the same time that the assessments went out. I just have a question on Mr. Anderson's report. What are the ramifications of what happens if we don't address the airport concerns with the FAA? Do they...
$21 million will come from Jasper County to go back to the FAA. That's what will happen.
We don't want that to happen.
Okay.
So we don't want them to shut us down. So, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
Next item on the agenda is the ordinances. The first one is Lisa Wagner for the public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 0202219 to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County so as to transfer property located at 9606 Speedway Boulevard bearing Jasper County Tax Map Number 0390006002 from the community commercial zone and rural preservation zone to the general commercial zone on the Jasper County official zoning map.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Councilmembers.
Welcome back.
Thank you. The subject property consists of 33.4 acres and is located at 9606 Speedway Boulevard. The applicant has requested a zoning map amendment to have the property designated as general commercial. The property is currently split zone, community commercial, and rural preservation. The applicant would like to develop a warehousing and transportation establishment at this location. The property is currently vacant, but it was previously used as a salvage yard for selling auto parts and was known as the McGraw's Auto Salvage in the Hardyville area. The future land use map in the Jasper County Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as urban transition, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by the municipality. For these areas that experience new development or redevelopment, considerations should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. The adjacent parcels are zone, community commercial, rural preservation, or residential. The city limits of Hardyville are nearby, but it is not immediately adjacent to the property, so annexation is not a possibility. Adjacent land uses are commercial and vacant. And the property is accessed by Speedway Boulevard, which is a four-lane divided highway classified as a major thoroughfare. The Planning Commission reviewed this application at their May 10 meeting, and they have recommended approval of the request to have the property designated as general commercial. And the site is on your monitors there, and it's outlined in blue. Public notices were sent to the adjacent property owners, but I've not received any comments. And a sign was posted, "Old Property," and a notice put in the newspaper.
Did you send a letter to me?
Mail.
Did you send a letter to me?
Probably not to you, but everybody within 500 feet of the property. Probably not to you, but everybody within 500 feet of the property we did.
You want to clarify that you didn't send it to her because she was not within 500 feet of the property?
Because you were not within 500 feet of the property.
Okay.
Again, it is a public hearing.
Okay, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice, public hearing close. We're going to call for motion.
So, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Properly move and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Mr. David Tetter, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 0202220, approving a development agreement for HCP Partners LLC with our properties, LLC and Terry are lead owners pursuant to the South Carolina Local Government Development Act Agreement Act and authorizing the chairperson of Jasper County to execute said development agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of council. Good evening. This ordinance approves or provides authorization to enter the development agreement for the property that we just, Ms. Wagner, just discussed, as well as another property owned by the state's ownership, given by the state's ownership, as we discussed at the last meeting. The development agreement allows us to ensure that there are adequate funds collected through developer fees to do any traffic mitigation necessary, as well as since it is a heavier duty commercial operation, pay for heavy rescue equipment upgrades to our fire department. The fees are based upon the same fees that were put on 95 Logistics a couple of months ago. There have been no changes since our last reading on this. The representative of the owner developer is here. I have one quick reason. Is this the one that we wanted to discuss, a potential additional buffer against the residential? Yes, as you have called on 95 Logistics where we had a piece of property that was adjacent to a residential, a zoned property, we provided an additional buffering request there. That was a comment that we're going to discuss with the owner developer between now and the next reading. That was one of those. I have not received any request for comments on this document since it was published files, and this is a public hearing.
Madam Chairman, a question on the monies for that rest that to be used in levy or for that?
It's given to county council to pay for whatever fees that we, or not fees, whatever equipment. You were called that we were looking in the 95 Logistics and strategically placing it and working with the city of Hardyville and Experment that we enhanced each other's ability to handle things down there. So there's a location for where the equipment would go designated at this point. We'll be able to stretch the county council.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
On page seven of the agreement, it says 600 for roads and traffic mitigating facilities by public safety and maintenance services. Is this amount to be determined? What does that mean?
We were, at the time that we drafted this, we were looking for the traffic mitigation study to be finally completed and costed out. We received some of the information today, and the traffic mitigation fee would be more than adequate to pay for the indicated lane improvements on Highway 17. So we can read that. The yellow highlighted there yesterday, that was the place I wanted to make sure that we addressed it with the anticipation that came available, so the highlighting would come Meanwhile, as we did put in there, this is approximately 900,000 square feet. At 500,000 square feet or halfway through, additional traffic warrant study has to be done to determine if additional improvements need to be made because of the effect of the build.
When they do the traffic study, will they include the levy warehouse that Hardyville's putting in?
They look at the background traffic study for traffic counts, peak air, AM PM, and total during the day. So it's taken into account if there's a specific intersection that needs to be designated, that can be done as well. That's where they would put additional car counters or vehicle counters out there to So, Madam, this is a public hearing.
Okay, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing. Public hearing going once, going twice, all in, going three times, public hearing close. At this time, we call for motion.
So, Madam Chairman.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to remove the amounts to be determined applicable and remove the yellow portion. That would have to be made by the person. Six hours and $600. Five hundred dollars, respectively.
Amendment will have to be made by the person who made the motion?
No, anybody can do it.
Madam Chairman, the enacting ordinance has in provision one that the development agreement, which is what we're talking about, the substantial this form will be approved with leave to make such minor grammatic changes, and the chairman shall approve one of my advice and the advice of the county administrator. This is one of those things that you will see, I will remove them by third reading as a matter of course, just as I will correct a typographical misalignment of email addresses for myself and the county administrators. I will take care of those in the regular order via third reading.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Call for motion, I mean, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Nays have the same right. All who said nay, raise your hand so it can be recorded. Extensions. Move them.
If I could, one last thing, I want to announce that there will be a second required public hearing on August 15th at our regular schedule meeting, August 15th on Monday.
I'll read to D.
Yes, ma'am. The next item is item C, date of tender, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 0, I'm sorry, O, 2022-21 by authorizing and creating the development of a jointly owned and operated multi-county industrial business park in conjunction with Hampton County. Such industrial business park be geographically located in Jasper County and established pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, is amended, providing for a rich park agreement with Hampton County to provide for the expenses and distribution of fees in lieu of outdoor taxes for the park, providing for the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities by HCP Partners LLC acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors collectively, the company and the county, the project to be included in the park, providing for the benefits of a multi-county industrial business park being made available to the company and the project and other matters relating thereto.
Madam Chairman, this is in as for a public hearing. This is on the same properties that we just discussed, the part of development agreement in the same similar fashion of 95 Logistics, we are creating a multi-county park revenue distribution to, as a special source revenue credit back to the owner developer from the late before, as well as allowing us to create such funds as we may need for any unforeseen foster spaces.
Okay. The floor is now open for a public hearing. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice, public hearing going three times, Call for vote.
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing and second reading by Mr. David Tetter of ordinance number O, 2022-22, to amend the Franklin Track Development Agreement by bringing a second five-year renewal, modifying the developer fees section, and to make certain tax amendments and matters related thereto.
Madam Chairman and members of council, this was discussed at the last meeting. Franklin Track is out by Point South. It includes the spec building of Southern Carolina Alliance, basically sold to build its first source in that particular area back behind, next to the Low Country Council of Investments area back in there. The original development agreement provided for extension, two extensions. The owner has requested that we extended it, expire this in the next several months, if I recall correctly, without looking at it against a timely ask for an extension for five years. We have changed the language in certain aspects of regular to our modern development agreement, specifically to provide for fees that are in their fee schedule to be used in a conglomerate of categories that we have, and to recognize an exemption for the first 200,000 square feet that was in the original development agreement. When the building was presented by Southern Carolina Alliance to build its first source, it was thought, because it said 0% of the developer fees for the first 200,000, we missed that there was a second 25% of the first 200,000. This clarifies that so that there's not a fee for what Billings' first source is doing out there, by changing the table, the table G under section 11 to reflect that. Then it's really the only change in development agreements, an extension, modernization, and a recognition of an exemption for an industrial development in that area. I've received no requests for public comment from others.
Did you receive any?
No, I haven't received no public comment.
So this is a public hearing?
Public hearing. We're going to open the floor for a public hearing. Public hearing going once, twice, public hearing close. Call for motion.
So, Madam Chairman.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, if I could, again, this is a moment ago, this is, there will be a second required public hearing with August 15th at 6 o'clock in Council Chambers.
The next item on the agenda is item E, David Tetter, public hearing and third reading of ordinance number O, 2022-18 to amend chapter 27 of the County Code of Ordinances fees to authorize and set fees and costs for the coroner's office and matters related thereto.
Madam Chairman and members of council, this is third reading. Almost probably all coroner's offices across the state have a set of fees that they charge for certain services that are provided. They also provide for certain exemptions. It came to our attention that the county had not adopted a set of fees. So I prepared this ordinance in consultation with administration, the finance department, and the coroner and the council. These fees are aligned with what other counties certainly situated would charge for certain things, and it also provides that next of kin, don't charge, don't get charged for most of the reports that they would need processed in the state. And it is a public hearing as well.
I'll open the floor for public hearings. Public hearing going once, going twice, going three times. I'm going to call for motion. Do I hear a second? Motion dimes for lack of a second.
The next item on the agenda is Mr. David Tetter, second reading of ordinance number O, 2022-23 to amend chapter 26 of the County Code of Ordinances taxation to provide for the reduction in value of a boat and its motor by 42, it's 75% of its fair market value for the purpose of personal property taxation, providing that this ordinance does not apply the boats or watercraft which are used as a primary or secondary residence receiving a 4% or 6% tax rate and matters related thereto.
Madam Chair and members of council, this is a second reading. Some years ago, the state legislature saw fit to create an exemption for property taxation for a portion of a boat and motor's value. It's a funny percentage, as you see there, but it has the equivalent of reducing it from a 10% ratio to a possibly a 6% ratio. It doesn't apply to, I don't think we had the situation in Jasper County where it was a little horrid. They were already claiming the 4% primary residence or secondary, second home. We didn't get it, so it's how we're counting it, some years ago. Other coastal counties have done, and so we've just copied the same percentages that are by far in the statute. There was a fiscal impact analysis during budget, and I believe it was $75,000,000 at the outside impacting revenues to do this. I do have one type over here, I have to fix that. Now, this type, one of the code sections, type 77, it's 220, but it's 220 in the second section, so it's just a minor correction, I'll make it go with third reading.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I have a question, Mr. Tetter. There was, a while back when I first came forward, they called a little about these, this tax, saying that at one time we had, it seemed like 15 years, extra 15 years that we don't tax, we wouldn't tax it at all. And that changed, and then I called Hampton, they did the same thing. Is this something that you put in here that, or is that just something that?
It would be a different statutory section that would do that. There's one that also, that if your boat is valued by a certain amount of money, it's also exempt, you have to reach a point under another statute to tax it. This is a different.
Do we have that tax? I mean, do we have that?
It's my understanding that that's practice. You have a battle worth less than a battle of the number five. You have a bat over worth less than a half of the number $500, whatever it is, but it doesn't, you got to be taxed.
But it seemed to be not, that didn't seem to be the case. Who's that man?
How?
Never. Thank you.
How, how, Mr. Tetter, how old a boat has to be before you give a tax? How old a boat has to be before you give a tax?
I don't think the age of the boat has anything to do with it. It's what the value is based on, as I understand, the assessor's office gets a scheduled values for folks just like they get for cars, and that's what they use an appreciated value over time, which is subject to challenge if your motor is blown or your boat's in bad shape, you can appeal the assessment. But the age of the boat, I don't think has much to, has anything to do with it other than if it was over a certain age, you'd appreciate that. I apologize, I'm not good with all these assessments, ins and outs. I will ask Susan Wade, our assessor at Florida State, if you want me to bring more better federal information.
So, so is we, we still taxing on, say, a 15-year-old boat? Like a 12, 15-year-old boat, you still charge tax on it?
Madam Chair. I mean, that's the auditor's role, not the assessor. And we can, we can ask the auditor if you'd like to come in and try to give you an update on that or practices, but you know, she's gone through a double loss this week with both her parents. But maybe a little time till we get that clarified.
I can't say from personal experience having more than a 15-year-old boat, the kind of time it should be taxed on. In Beaufort County.
Well, basically what this ordinance is doing is bringing the tax rate down from 10% to 6%, which is what the surrounding counties have to do with those.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And this is the second reading.
And there'll be a public hearing on August 15.
There'll be a public hearing on August 15. So at this time, I want to call for motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move along.
Next item on the agenda is item G, David Tetter, consideration of the first reading of ordinance to levy and impose a one, half, a 1% sales tax and use tax subject to a referendum within Jasper County pursuant to section 4-10-10 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina in 1976 as amended, to define the specific purposes and designate projects for which proceeds of the tax may be used, to provide the maximum time for which such tax may be imposed, to provide the estimated cost of the projects funded from proceeds of the tax, to provide for accounting-wide referendum on the imposition, imposition of the sales and use taxes and the issuance of general obligation bonds, and to prescribe the contents of the valid questions in the referendum to provide for the administration of the tax in approved, to provide for the payment of the tax in approved, and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
All right. Members of council, Madam Chairwoman, I chairwoman. In May, the government signed a bill legislation which allowed for up to a 1% sales tax, up to 10 years, to create funds to do one of six millerate things that are in the ordinance, buying decent land by conservation, transferable development rights, leases with options, and things like that. This came to our attention, I have a workshop, we can go on this. I used a template that was created mostly by Senator Dave Tom Davis of our delegation, the Beaufort County delegation. Beaufort County was considering one of these for themselves and had second reading with some modifications. There are some issues involved with it that I'm still trying from the administrator's assistance, the consultation with Beaufort County's administrator, county attorney, along with Senator Davis and the Department of Reverend, who's to get answers to, is this tax available to us because we have at this particular point in time, three sales and use taxes, being the local option sales tax, the 1% transportation sales tax, and education pay. The issue is that the transportation sales tax is scheduled to terminate prior to the referendum and prior to the time at which the tax would be implemented in May of 2023 if it passed at a referendum. There's some other drafting questions out there that I don't, Beaufort County is trying to get answered on, I talked to Senator Davis last week. He's been in contact with the Attorney General to get some answers or get guidance, since they don't give answers, they give us guidance. To say I provided you with some of my research on this matter. So at this point, I'll point out that Beaufort County decided to reduce the time period that the tax would be in effect. They increased it from a half penny to a full penny, and they had some discussions that, as Charleston County has done, Charleston County with this transportation sales tax, allocated a portion of that revenue to go for green belts. Green belts are different than green space in certain instances. That's certainly an option to be considered. There's a lot of things that you can consider on this. I will tell you that I don't have all the answers right now. I expect them to come in shortly. We'll either be able to do it or not do it. So I think the administrator and I, in the discussion today, thought that if you want to favorably consider doing this now or in the future, then you give a first reading, and let's see where we go in getting answers this week. We have to go on a fast schedule if you're going to have it approved and ready for the election commission by August 15. We have to have two special meetings to do that, and I'll have to help us size this week. So those are the best of questions before the council is to authorize us to move forward with help size, taking public hearing in a second reading while we get the answers or not. Mr. Administrator, did I miss anything in our analysis from our discussion up to a couple of hours ago?
No, sir. I will fix it.
Okay. So we're gonna move on with the first reading, and you will have the time to, to send information and tell us whether we're right or whether we're wrong, but in the first reading, it won't hurt anything. So at this time, I'm gonna call for motion for consideration of the first reading of this ordinance.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I hear a second? Properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any say of the same? Mr. Brandley? Are you voting up or you abstaining or? You abstain?
Madam Chairwoman, administration and the clerk and I will be needing to work out a date for a public hearing so that I can get 15 days in there of publication of their reading.
All right.
The next item on the agenda is item H, Kimberly Burgess, consideration of first reading by title only of an ordinance to amend Jasper County ordinance number 2021-17 for fiscal year 2022 Jasper County budget to provide for amendments to the budget and to carry over approved lapping funds to fiscal year 2023, and to amend Jasper County ordinance 02022-17 for fiscal year 2023 Jasper County budget to provide for amendments to the budget resulting from the carryover of lapping funds for the fiscal year 2022 and matters related thereto.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. This is the first reading only, by title only, because we do not yet have the amounts. We're still recording expenditures for the prior fiscal year, and we anticipate that at our, at the next council meeting on August 15, that we will be able to provide you with the amounts that will be, either be required for budget amendments or the amounts for, to carry forward lapping funds, which would be for capital items only, and also on August 15, we have scheduled a public hearing.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, this is, how, can we amend a budget that we don't have anymore? We don't have a budget.
Yes.
We have the new budget.
We can, we can go back and amend the prior year budget. Yes, sir.
So what we're doing is actually agreeing to take it out of the general fund. Accrual's accrual. This is, they shouldn't have done it from the budget, right?
We are, we, if there are certain items that were not expended, then, or for whatever reason, say we, we decided we didn't need that particular item, or perhaps it went over budget, so we need to basically reallocate it among other line items or among other departments, that's what this, this budget will do. So the carryover part of it is for capital expenditures that didn't, that were planned but for whatever reasons were, weren't expended. So that will fall into the fiscal year 23 budget, but we have to take it from the fiscal year 22. So these are.
This is a change from what we did previously.
When we did it last year, we had, we actually incorporated it as a part of the final budget reading for last year, but because we are still recording invoices that applied to the fiscal year, we decided to wait until we had a clearer picture of what those, what that budget amendment would be.
Don't we know how much is out there coming in? In your report, you always put down.
We do have the, those are, those are purchase orders. There are some items that may not have a purchase order, but they may have been expended, especially in that last month or so of the year. So we, we wait, and also revenue, revenue can be recorded also in those 60 days after year end, so it's not just the expenditures, it's also, also the revenue. So in order to have that budget amendment more accurately reflect what happened during the year, we were waiting until.
What cost of the purchase order to be used? What, what amount do you have set along?
$500.
Thank you.
Call for motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is Ms. Lisa Wagner, consideration of the first reading of an ordinance to adopt a planned development district zoning for two tracks of land consisting of approximately 26.63 acres, bearing Jasper County tax map number 0810004007 and 0810004080, located along North Oakody Highway, Highway 170, approximately two miles east of the intersection of Highway 462 and known as Bailey Park PDD.
The applicant has requested a planned development district zoning designation for two parcels of land consisting of a total of 26.63 acres located along Highway 170, approximately two miles east of the intersection of Highway 462, and the property also fronts on Old Bailey Road. It's highlighted in blue on your monitors. Currently, the property is zoned community commercial and residential and is undeveloped. The concept plan illustrates the general layout, arrangement of land uses, and access points. The PDD proposes one full access point on Highway 170 and one full access point on Old Bailey Road. The proposed land uses are comprised of mixed-use, commercial, community commercial, multifamily residential, and single-family residential, attached and detached. A maximum density for the commercial track will not exceed 65,280 square feet, which is 12,000 square feet per acre based on Duplins. A maximum density for the residential track is 233 units, which is 12 units per acre based on Duplin acres. There would be a 50-foot buffer requirement along Highway 170, and a 15-foot setback is proposed for commercial use that is adjacent to residential use and not separated by road. Detached, single-family residential and duplexes will require a six-foot side yard setbacks, 15-foot rear yard setbacks, and 25-foot front yard setbacks for lots with front-loaded garages, and 15-feet front yard setbacks for lots with side-loaded garages. Attached, single-family residential townhomes, condominiums will require 6-feet side yard setbacks for non-common property lines, a perimeter buffer of 10 feet for single-family residential townhomes, and all other perimeter buffers would be 20 feet. There would be 10% of open space provided, and landscaping will meet or exceed the county's requirements. As far as the adjacent zoning and existing uses, north of this track is the Center Point PDD, it's zoned PDD, and it's located in Jasper County. To the south of this track is Old Bailey Road and single-family residential. Of course, Old Bailey Road is South Carolina DOT, and the zoning there within Jasper County to the south is residential, and across Old Bailey Road is, those properties are in Beaufort County. To the west, the properties are primarily vacant. There is Beaufort Jasper Comprehensive Health and a single-family residential. The property is along Highway 170 to the west or community commercial, and to the rear is residential, and those properties are located in Jasper County. To the east of this track, the property is vacant. There is the one single-family residence along Old Bailey Road, and the property along Highway 170 is community commercial, and then to the rear of that property is residential, and that's in Jasper County. As far as the traffic and access, one of the properties is accessed by North Oakody Highway, Highway 170, which is a four-lane state-maintained highway classified as an arterial road. The other property is accessed by Old Bailey Road, which is a two-lane state-maintained road classified as a local road. A traffic impact study was prepared by AECom, and a Phase 1 environmental site assessment was prepared by GHB. Both reports were included with the staff report. There will be a public hearing scheduled for a future county council meeting at planning commission review. Notices were sent to neighborhood properties notifying them of the planning commission's review of that applicant's request to have the properties designated as PDD. Two public hearings signs were posted, one along 170 and one along Old Bailey Road. We received five comments. Those also were included with your staff report. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I will just point out real quick, this was the concept map, so you see along the Oakody Highway where it says Track A, that is the commercial portion, and Track B is the residential
Any questions? Time to call for motion.
Madam Chair, I thought we had talked about having a workshop.
Well, this is, yeah, this is the one where we said we were gonna have the workshop first and come back and vote on it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to enable this, so we have a, to a later date, so we have a workshop. Second.
Properly moving, second. All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. This down.
Next thing on the agenda is new business. It's actually my item. It's an appointment request for a new member to the Library Board of Trustees. Currently, we have a seat that is vacant on the Library Board of Trustees, a seat number zero seven LV. Mrs. Hamilton has submitted her request to be excused for the remainder of her term on the Library Board. Her term is scheduled to end on twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three. We currently have one candidate for this seat to fill the remainder of that term. Her name is Ms. Julie Michaels. Ms. Michaels has expressed a great interest in the position and has former volunteer experience in nonprofit literacy organization. I have attached in your packet her email and her application for your review. Staff recommends the appointment of Ms. Michaels to the seat for the remainder of her four-year term, previously held by Ms. Felicia Hamilton, beginning on July eighteenth twenty twenty-two, with the term ending on twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three. And at that term end, Ms. Michaels can be considered for reappointment to the seat by the county council.
Any questions? Do we hear a motion?
Send them to Madam Chair.
Second.
Properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next new business item we have is also mine. The item is request to approve for the reappointments of Mr. Roy DePont, Gregory Gilbert, and Ms. Josie Anderson to the Low Country Workforce Board for another three-year term effective beginning seven, one of twenty twenty-two. Mr. Michael Butler, the Workforce Development Director of the Low Country Council of Governments, has asked that Jasper County Council reappoint Mr. Ray DePont, Mr. Gregory Gilbert, and Ms. Josie Anderson to the Low Country Workforce Board for another three-year term effective seven, one of twenty twenty-two. And staff recommends the reappointments as per his request.
Send them to Madam Chair.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Properly moving, second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is Ms. Andrew Flugel for an appointment request for the Grievance Committee.
Madam Chair, members of council, I'd ask, came before you in the year twenty twenty, talk about the Grievance Committee for some reappointments. We always like to have the Grievance Committee current with you. As you may remember, we had no grievances filed last year, which is a good thing. But they do come in waves. And so we want to be prepared in case we do receive a grievance. These employees do a great job. Mr. Tetter serves as a counselor for them, and they go above and beyond here grievances and try to sort those through. We have one new appointee recommendation to you. You make the appointments, Mr. Ramirez in the Appraiser's office. And then you'll see the five members and the two alternates listed in my memo there asking that you appoint the new member and that you reappoint the other existing members and also the two alternates and allow us to try to sort through the terms of those individuals. They're all supposed to serve stagger terms.
Madam Chair, is that a question? On the ordinance, I look to the ordinance, and it has nothing that we have to, it's up to you to appoint them. I just, again, I guess it's going to be a history, though, or something.
There is, there is history to it. It's actually listed that way in the Jasper County Personnel Procedures Manual as well. That was incorrectly done. State statute says it is the county council's responsibility to make the appointments. And so that's why we come before you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Call for a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Let's move right along. We might be throwing over no business. Time for no comments. Do we have any comment, Mr. Kemp?
Just real quick, I'll just, I have a lot, but I'll just go to this one. At the last Hartville Council meeting, Chief Woodward and Sheriff Pitt entered an MOU to have a crime prevention task force, which is well needed, working on this. My understanding is that we really should get from Pitt, sorry, Pitt, I mean Sheriff Pitt. But they're agreeing to go with each other's jurisdictions with crimes granted. Thank you.
Thank you. It's wrapping up.
Madam Chair, I'd like to extend my condolences to our auditor who lost her mother just recently.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, and to this piece of family who lost her.
She lost her father, too.
No, it's not my son or my father. I haven't heard anything about father.
Father died a bit before yesterday.
Oh, Jesus.
They had him buried, man.
Wow.
Yeah.
Did he bury him?
He buried him. She died of a cell, and he died of a full tear.
Jesus.
One kept the other alive.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Pass thank you, Chair.
We thank, we thank. I'll go ahead and say, as long as we still be here and keep it with each and everybody, my brother's squad, too, the Reed family. And I want to say to my manager, vice chair, to my council members, I want to think about, let's get the sheriff to have a meat wagon. So when they glide on roadblocks, you don't have to run back and forth to kick somebody to the, to the jailhouse. You can sit there and put them all in there one time. You know, you got, you got a ran, you got a ran new land. And if you got to make payment on it, sheriff can use it. He can, he can buy it, so you know. Let them use it. I mean, you should let them sit there and keep getting dust on it, you know, put it to use. I mean, he ain't like, they ain't bringing money, and they're bringing a lot of money here.
Call for a motion.
You know. I would like to make a motion off to the legislature that he can handle that for us.
Second, Madam Chair.
You can make a motion, that's what you want to do.
What's this? We're going to get a pound of the dick, tell you the last time.
Yeah, we need to talk to those first because I think we have removed the insurance and stuff of that back. Then we'll see, we'll talk, we'll talk about it.
That's what it is.
Madam Chair, to follow up with our state DOT rep, that we did the tour with a few weeks back. Just working on assessment on those roads and looking at some state funding to try to get those roads out. So just wait to hear back from them when they're working on that. That's all I've got.
And we, we thank you. And I'll be traveling to Texas on Thursday. Y'all pray for me with the heat because you know I can't stay in heat. But anyway, I have to go to funeralize my first cousin. To Houston, so I'll be going from Thursday to Monday, Monday evening. So pray for us as we take the journey.
Pray for connections. Pray for connections on the airplane.
My sister's fighting left and right. She don't want to go to the L.A. She wants us to drive.
You want to be high. Blue, because we want a hundred and twelve.
Yeah, that's what it is. So at this time, you're going to ask the administrator for a news report, and after that, we're going home.
Madam Chair, members of council, I promise I'll make it short. I just did want to reiterate for the public's benefit, the first item in your report, congratulations. You are to receive Leaders Against the Litter Award at your Association of Counties Conference coming up. And that's for your support and funding of the Keep Jasper County Beautiful program and all the good things that program is doing. So congratulations to you. And then I wanted to report on one item that was not on my report. And in going through the sales tax information with Mr. Tetter, I don't know if we properly reported to you that the transportation sales tax was overperforming. We mentioned that to you, but we have an official estimate that it'll probably conclude in September or October, which means you currently have raised over twenty-eight million dollars of the thirty million dollars. And good news is you haven't spent much of that at all. You have several projects identified for the use of those funds, but haven't spent a whole lot there yet. Last week, the DOT, we have this relationship via memorandum of understanding, but the DOT bid out the exit twenty-one improvements here in Regisland, which is one of the projects of your sales tax, and unfortunately received no bids. So they're trying to investigate that and see why that was. And that's the latest and greatest that I have to report to you on the transportation sales tax.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. At this time, Rusty, do you have anything quick you want to say about COVID?
Do I want to? No, ma'am.
Okay.
The South Carolina Department of Health and Environment Control Public Health did push out a, an update, and unfortunately, all forty-six counties have regressed back into a high transmissibility rate.
Okay. Thank you. Wear your mask, people. Wear your mask. COVID coming for you. It's time for a call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.